Good evening, everyone.
April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Special joint meeting of the Cumberland Town Council and the Cumberland Planning Board. For the record, all the council members are present, and I'm going to open our meeting at six forty P. M. Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we have with our members Mister Ambrosia, Mister Rochette, Mister McDonald, Mister Butler, and myself, Mister Coon. Into the present proceeding.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, could all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it is a public presentation. It's a draft Valley Falls and Lonsdale Economic Revitalization and Social Equity Plan by Forward Consulting and F. H. I. Studio. Mister Stevens.
Thank you, Mister President. I want to welcome the members of the Planning Board and the Council here, and I want to kick things off by saying this plan is the culmination and leading the pathway to a brighter future for Valley Falls and Lonsdale. We've had some important new developments, particularly we have the Ann and Hope Mill, which has received master plan approval, which includes affordable housing. We have Saint Patrick Church, which has been, is going to be saved. It's received preliminary approval for forty-four unit. It's all affordable. The town is going to restore and rehab the Amaral Building to create a new office of community health and outreach. And I'm pleased to report that as of mid-May, we're going to be planting over two hundred street trees in Valley Falls and Lonsdale. And with luck, the Rhode Island D. O. T. will be completing the Broad Street project this year. Tonight, Forward Planning and Ken Livingston of F. H. I. Studio, their partner's going to make a presentation. We were very pleased to get a one hundred thousand dollar grant from Rhode Island Commerce Corporation to fund this project. And it's been terrific working with them for the last four or five months. We had a preliminary draft and a a meeting earlier in December and got a good, was it January? January, it was called, yeah, Good Response at the Filibuster Club. And this plan has recommendations and critical foundation for what we hope are additional funding opportunities for Commerce Corporation through their site readiness program. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Poole.
Todd, welcome. Please, if you wouldn't mind, Mister Poole, please state your name and address for the record.
There we go. All right. Todd Poole, company name is Forward Planning, and we're located in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We have offices in New York as well. And I'm also joined by Ken Livingston of F. H. I., who will be up here momentarily. I believe the presentation has been passed around to everyone to look at because it's going to be very difficult, I think, to see some of the detail on the screens in front of you. And before I start, Council President, Mayor, Governing Body Members, Planning Board Members, thank you very much for having us here. As Jonathan just mentioned, it's been a pleasure working with the town and working with planning staff. We've gotten a lot done, and they help provide some guidance on connecting with key stakeholders, as well as providing us with useful information to produce this report. Let me start. Okay, and you can follow along with your paper guide. What you have on this screen right now is really the four phases of the study that we've, you know, completed to date. Phase one referred to as exploration, where we analyze the socioeconomics, labor and industry trends, entrepreneurial capacity, real estate, and also what we refer to as an I. L. V. or improvement to land value that helps us to identify redevelopment parcels. Phase two, feedback, is where we conducted much of our public outreach. We had the community online survey, which was well subscribed to in terms of the amount of people that answered that survey. Stakeholder interviews, a S. W. A. T. analysis, for those who are not familiar with that acronym, S. W. A. T. is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then, of course, we had a public meeting back in January where we were presenting key findings from phases one and two. Phase three, which ended not all that long ago, was focused on, you know, good part of what Ken's firm does is connectivity planning. So looking at transportation, pedestrian connectivity, not only in the downtown area, but getting to the, you know, the river area and the open space areas of town. We performed a financial feasibility analysis on the Noshon Mills site, looking at not just if it would work for housing, obviously, we know there's a developer on the scene, you know, looking at that. But, you know, if in fact the housing component should fall through, what are the other opportunities for adaptively reusing that building? So we looked at a number of scenarios, one of them being that the building goes back to a light industrial use, but with many smaller light industrial uses within it, including a commercial kitchen. Some of the other uses that we considered, and we can talk about this a little bit later, would be for entertainment purposes. There are a lot of old factory buildings that are being adaptively reused for that purpose at present. We also, in this phase three, looked at zoning and affordable housing. Ken and I did that jointly. Earlier on, even though it shows up in phase three, we went through a branding exercise with Jonathan and Glenn. And, you know, we talked about branding, you know, what should the brand be strictly for the Valley Falls, Lonsdale District, not for all of Cumberland, but just for this district? So in doing that, we came up with a, you know, logo and colors and, you know, particular indicia or, you know, image, you know, of the factory town back, you know, in its heyday. And so I don't know, Jonathan, is that available for the public to see, or have they seen it yet? Okay, well, I'm sure that's going to be made available shortly. And then we had some place making ideas that come from F. H. I. that are also within the full report. Finally, we're here at phase four, which we're referring to as the home stretch. And in this particular phase, and what really is going to be focused, the focus of today's presentation, is looking at the identification and evaluation of strategic investment projects. And we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail shortly. And then the draft and final report, we have a draft report completed. We're going to make a few more edits to that report, and then the final report will be provided to the town, and that will conclude our effort. All right, so there we go. Moving on, this is our study area. As you can see, we were charged with focusing on Broad Street and Minden Road. You can see Ann and Hope District is, you know, kind of smack dab in the middle of this study area that we looked at, which is in the bound in black. Yeah, so it's quite a big stretch of area, and the area obviously encompasses residential, light industrial, commercial, and, you know, just a little bit of what I would refer to as green space, open space, as it gets close to the Black River. So the market supportable land use opportunities that we've identified, and I'm going to show you four. The first is there's demand for multifamily residential. There is simply, not only in this area, but regionally, statewide, throughout the U. S., there is simply not enough housing. We have a housing shortage. And that, you know, that pertains to this area as well. We spoke to a number of housing developers as part of this process, and we know that they're chomping at the bit to build yet more housing. Not all of it luxury, because we know when you see the housing that's going up, a lot of it is, and part of that is the fact that, you know, where they're allowed to build and what it costs to build is principally driving the fact that the housing that they're building is a luxury product. But there is opportunity for developing middle income housing, workforce housing, however you'd like to refer to it, in town. We identified that the V. F. L. or Valley, Valley Falls, Lonsdale District could accommodate easily three hundred to three hundred and fifty units over the next five years, just based on the shortages that we've identified. In one place that this could, you know, possibly be captured, and we'll talk about this, is at the Stop and Shop site. We looked again very closely at Noshon Mills or the Noshon Mill Factory Building, and with the understanding that it's not a slam dunk that that housing project will move forward, very well could, and that's fine. But should it not, you have a hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot building spread out over two floors that you would need to figure out what to do with. And that building, as it sits today, needs work, it needs a new roof certainly. But if it went the light industrial route, a owner of the property or developer of the property wouldn't have to put nearly as much money into it as they would for housing. And you could, you know, slice up that space for a variety of smaller light industrial users. Manufacturing is one of your strongest industries in this region. That was identified in our report. You've got a lot of folks who live locally, who work in that industry. And the fact of the matter is, over the last few years, manufacturing in this country is coming back. Not the manufacturing that your grandfather might be familiar with, small scale manufacturing. Think of, you know, a five thousand square foot facility that has three D. machines that are producing stuff. That's the kind of manufacturing that we're talking about, or small Java type sites where it's just assembly, right? This type of space is in great demand in a lot of communities, particularly communities that we work in, because we, you know, we work all over the eastern U. S., and this kind of space is very difficult to find, because usually if you find an old factory building that's in relatively good condition, it is being converted into housing, or if it's not being knocked down. So again, to the extent that this does not pan out for housing, we believe that it does have a strong use potential for light industrial. And other uses which could go, which could coexist would be entertainment. So think of a kind of a, say it's a Dave and Buster's, but an environment where you've got a bowling alley and arcades. That kind of building could be adaptively reused for those kind of uses again. Next, we identified locally serving service and food businesses. There's a shortage of those in town, and we think there's a strong unmet demand for those types of businesses. So think small eateries, you know, think dry cleaners, you know, shoe repair, just small entrepreneurial businesses. You have a lot of those folks who live locally who would love to start those businesses if the space were available. If some of the vacant space that you see on Broad Street became available, you know, we heard from, you know, some of the small business owners that have a business, they don't own the building that they're in, so they're unable to make, you know, certain, you know, construction improvements to the building because they don't own the property. It would be nice to have a program that already exists at the state level, help finance those small entrepreneurs to purchase their building and make the necessary improvements to operate their business. We also see that, you know, you've got a large and growing, you know, Latino community here. That community is particularly entrepreneurial. They're always looking for opportunities in which to expand, you know, businesses that they currently own or establish new ones. Again, we think it's an opportunity to fill current vacant spaces on Broad Street. And then finally, as a market supportable land use opportunity, there's demand for small professional office space on Broad Street. You know, whether that's a, you know, small attorney, accountant, you know, or other small professionals who are hanging their shingles or hanging their shingle out to establish a business. What we don't see in many places that we work in is, you know, a lot of demand for big, you know, glass office buildings, right? But where there is demand is for small office space by professionals who are maybe transitioning from a corporate career, you know, working for a larger firm, or somebody just deciding to, you know, go, you know, become an accountant, and they're going to need space, or maybe they're a medical practitioner, you know, chiropractor, something like that. They need small space. Broad Street offers that opportunity. So, you know, between that and the locally serving businesses, there should be no reason that you have vacancy or unutilized space on Broad Street. So market supportable development opportunities, more specifically, I mentioned the Stop and Shop site. What we identified for this site, and most of what I'm describing to you can found in more detail in the draft report that is now available online on the town site. For the Stop and Shop location, we have identified that it could probably support between one hundred and one hundred and twenty-five multifamily units and ten thousand to twelve thousand square feet of additional ground floor retail. Now, you might say, well, how is that possible? The Stop and Shop site is overparked. There's a lot more, you know, parking spaces than are required for a retail center of that size. And every time we've been here, we've observed there's a lot of space there, you know, acres of space that are going underutilized. This is a project, obviously, that the owner of the project would need to be part of clearly. But it would be an opportunity to generate more revenue for them as a business, as well as tax revenues for the town, in addition to providing much needed housing, probably be, you know, a twenty percent set aside for affordable housing, so you get anywhere from, you know, twenty to, you know, twenty-five units of affordable housing on the site, in addition to more commercial retail restaurants principally. So we think it's a good opportunity. It's a flat site. It's a site that doesn't need a lot of improvements, you know, the utilities are in the ground. So this could be a project that could move forward inside of two to three years, you know, with planning board approval. Again, I'm not speaking for the owner of the property. This is something that, you know, we've already suggested that the town would need to have that conversation with the owner of the site. But we think it would be worthwhile to do so. Next, we think there is opportunity for more adaptive reuse of certain factory buildings. In this case, there is the, I guess it's next to the old Duck Depot decoy, I'm sorry, building on Ann and Hope Way. It's about a one point, you know, one and a quarter acre size site. And that building, which is approximately, I think it's four stories, could also provide for additional housing, you know, as an adaptive reuse site. There are other sites over there that are undeveloped, which could also provide for, you know, small scale housing, whether either town housing or multifamily residential rental. The, this is the Broad Street corridor, six acre site, which is next to a, it's a car service facility right off of, actually, I'm sorry, I'm back onto Broad Street. This is the six acre site on Broad Street between Bell's Court and Eli Street. So if you're thinking on the Eli Street side, across the street is the liquor store property with the surface parking lot and coming south all the way down to Bell's Court, so not quite, this is another block or two up from here. That six acre stretch is probably the sweet spot for creating a new there there, like a, you know, a more densely developed mixed use development site, which could become your kind of town center or, you know, downtown gathering spot. That's a long term play. Obviously, you've got multiple property owners there you would have to bring together. But, you know, we think that if, if the town is really going to generate more foot traffic and more retail businesses, you need more people concentrated in the downtown area near these commercial services, as well as creating more commercial services. So that's six acre site, and you can see it kind of bound on your map on Broad Street. That's a long term play. It's probably a fifteen to twenty year timeline to take it from concept to, you know, getting all the parties involved, to agreeing to do it, to assembling the properties, to going through approvals, constructing it, and ultimately building it out over time. Fifteen to twenty years is in the realm of reasonableness for doing that kind of redevelopment. And we think that could be kind of a crown jewel for investment in Cumberland. And then finally, as I mentioned, for the Noshon site, small scale manufacturing makes sense there, should the housing, proposed housing development fall through, as well as a commercial kitchen site of approximately, you know, five to ten thousand square feet on the, I guess, what would be the western edge of that building closest to Broad Street, also makes sense. All right, we're going to jump quickly into the recommendations for strategic actions, policies, and programs. And this might be a little hard to read. First one is spur denser mixed use redevelopment along Broad Street, just exactly what I've just spoken about. And what we have here, and this is in your report, is we've identified, you know, the project goal. So this, in this particular case, the spurring of denser mixed use redevelopment is the goal. We have next to that in a column, the activities to achieve the goal. For those who don't have this in front of them, for example, one of those activities is identify property owners along Broad Street between Eli and, in this case, Chapel Avenue, and invite them to participate in informal discussions. That's something that can be, you know, done relatively soon. We have, if you go over to the next column, we have a timeline to complete. In this case, we're saying this could be something that could be completed within six to eighteen months. We identify the lead actors, in this case, Cumberland Planning Department, the mayor, and key council members. Doesn't have to be limited to those folks, but we see those particular actors as the ones who would take the lead. And then we identify, I'm not going to go through all of these, but we identify other activities that would support the goal, in this case, of spurring denser mixed use redevelopment along Broad Street. You know, assisting or through the assistance of the planning board, creating an overlay zone that would, you know, really tell the development community and private investors that you're serious. Here's an overlay district that allows for the kind of mixed use development that, you know, you'd like to see there. So that's one of the project goals. Next goal is encouraging development on a portion of the Stop and Shop site. Again, already referenced that. You know, one of the activities, you need to initiate the discussions with the owner of the site. Obviously, if they're not interested, there's nothing that you can do about it. But I would think they'd want to have that discussion and hear the town out, particularly knowing that there's market support for the development of housing. And, you know, what we're talking about there, if that were to be developed along with the additional commercial space, you know, that could easily be a twenty to thirty million dollar project on their site, which right now, you know, they're not collecting rent or earning fees on the unused, you know, surface parking spaces, so that could be of interest to them. The the next goal is facilitating local access to technical assistance for small businesses and residents needing job training. We identified in our study that there are a number of residents in town that could probably, you know, access better paying jobs, particularly jobs requiring or, you know, from the skilled trades, if they had access to that kind of assistance, you know, as well as small businesses having access to technical assistance, not just funding, but also technical assistance. Right now, next door in Central Falls, they provide some of this assistance at a building not far from here. And one of our recommendations is to partner with Central Falls and, you know, kick in for the supporting of their administrator who helps to provide those services and also coordinate those services with state agencies. You don't have to reinvent the wheel, but you should be able to partner and direct people to where those resources are, and that's pretty local. And again, we give you the activities to achieve these goals, along with who the lead actor should be and how long it should take to ultimately get this started. We talked about Stop and Shop. And this next one is project goal, access TOD pilot funding to support TOD development at the Stop and Shop Shopping Center site. TOD, Todd, is transit oriented development, for those who aren't familiar with it. And as we were working on the study, it became aware to us from Jonathan that the state has or is making grant funding available for, or pilot funding available for establishing a transit oriented development district near bus service. So it's got to be near bus service, and that bus service has to have relatively strong frequency, which is our understanding that the Shoprite site, and I, Jonathan, I forget the number of the bus stops there. N. Fifteen, okay, proposed N. Fifteen would stop there, providing a necessary service that would allow the town to avail itself to the pilot funding. And why is that important? That could go hand in hand with also convincing the owner of the Shoprite property to do a development there that would become a transit oriented development, which makes a lot of sense. Those types of developments are well thought of and, you know, demand for them is pretty high in a lot of urban areas where people don't necessarily want to own a car, want to have the option to jump on public transit. Next, I think, Ken, you are up. So Ken Livingston of F. H. I. is going to talk to these next recommendations as he and his firm worked on these.
Sure, and for the record, it's Ken Livingston, F. H. I. Studio. We are a planning firm in Hartford, Connecticut. So, so as Todd mentioned, as we talk about the future, future for this area, one of the areas that we focus on is that neighborhood connectivity. There's a great neighborhood here. There's lots of activities, there's lots of residents, there's a number of retail. But how do you continue to bring it together, especially as development increases, whether it's the church redevelopment and hope redevelopment, or on the books and other ones? So one of the focuses was knowing Broad Street is under reconstruction, as we saw it just started again today. The D. O. T. has started to do a number of projects along that better sidewalks and such. But I think we suggested there's some additional enhancements they can do for allowing those crossings of Broad Street by pedestrians, when you have retail on both sides, that you can feel comfortable parking one location, getting cross, whereas you as those that live in the neighborhood can get across. But the other thing we found, and it was interesting, if you go on any Google Street View of many of these side streets here, sort of the east west side streets, maybe, so you'll see cars parking on the sidewalk throughout the neighborhood and throughout the area. And it just stood out in us, and that's something I think as for the development comes about, how do you deal with that? We've always said, parking issues, when you have a parking demand issue, that's a great sign. It's a great sign of demand, but how do you deal with it? And in this location, it's something that should be, should be looked at over time, especially to increase pedestrian safety, pedestrian comfort, when you have cars parked on sidewalks. What can you do about it? One of our suggestions was actually consider looking at some of those side streets to convert to one way, allowing few to actually not utilize one of the travel lanes for parking with some designated parking, do some enhancements to the sidewalks. We said over time, whether that's striping of the, the streets better, or it's even as you reconstruct some of these sidewalks, try to put some sort of curbing up, so sort of minimize the amount of cars that are actually using the sidewalks as an extra area of parking. So, but we also said that's got to be done in relation and discussion with landlords and property owners about that demand for parking and looking at other opportunities for shared parking or parking in different locations, because the last thing you want to have is people wanting to visit retail spaces or even spaces or even redevelopment of the neighborhood and say there's no parking. While we say we're going to talk TOD and bus service, reality is people are also in this town going to want parking. So how do you look at parking? We think it's going to be critical as this area continues to develop. The next was related to that was bicycle amenities. There's the bicycle trail, Blackstone Greenway, it comes through here. How do you actually highlight the signage and highlight what's here on Broad Street? Right now, it's sort of designed understandably to bypass Broad Street and retail, simply because of traffic and spaces. But how do you actually maybe put some more signage? How do you create some more awareness of what is there? I talked about the signage and then the restriping. So linking this all together to make it a place that someone feels comfortable not using a car, if they live in the neighborhoods, walk to Broad Street and create pedestrian activity along Broad Street. And then we talked about some zoning, and as Todd mentioned before, looking at some of the zoning and the zoning code and sort of modernize some of the uses of it to encourage further redevelopment. There's a number of ways of looking at zoning. You have some accessory dwelling units, but the overlay zone is what we really thought could give some guidance to property owners or, and potential developers to look at what development potential is there and see there is support from the community to have a different type of development, different type of use, especially where we settle along all this large area of parking lots and sort of spread out retail buildings.
Thanks, Ken. So we, we wanted to keep this presentation briefer than the first one we did back in January, because we want to really hear from you on, A, the recommendations and on any questions that you have with the study process itself. And we'll repeat again that the draft report is available online. So while we kind of were very high level about what we talked about just now, a lot of detail went into this. This was, you know, we're giving you the Reader Digest version of this report. A lot of detail went into this, a lot of outreach efforts. And, you know, we think you have a really comprehensive report that provides you with some guidelines and, you know, strong recommendations on why you should do certain things. So with that, I will open it up to questions from, I don't know, should I defer to you, Council President?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. So we can start here. We can go through planning, and then we can take members of the public. And then we can take anybody who's joining us on virtual. But to begin, counselors, does anyone have any questions? Counselor Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Poole, as well. A question that was resonating in my mind was, do you keep track of like recommendations that you offered versus execution of the municipalities that might have, you know, taken wholeheartedly to those recommendations and move forward, for example, the parking on the street, making streets one-way, that, that type of suggestion? Was that, is that a, well, is that something that you see more of these days happening and actually municipalities doing that? Versus taking that suggestion, being like, no, that ain't going to work here, and kick it to the curb?
You want that focused on the parking question?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's a great question. First, the recommendation we did see is to conduct more detailed traffic study. This was us looking at the area and the thoughts, and it really stood out us. Really just seeing how the parking has been utilized and sidewalks and looking at creative ideas, because they're, it's a very dense developed neighborhood as it is. So we're not saying, oh, there's a whole bunch of space for parking here, or we did come up with some suggestions of continuing, considering some shared use parking, especially where there's different time uses for some of the parking, and there's some public space park, public areas where maybe parking isn't utilized. But you have a lot of neighborhoods where the parking demand, what we saw is primarily residential residents that are, that are here overnight parking. So you had to be a little bit creative. The streets are kind of narrow, and it's not like you could restripe them. So our best suggestion was to really look at that. And the good thing is you have a number of streets, you know, pretty much a grid pattern. So the one-way pairs would work. So from our knowledge and our work of traffic engineers that I do have on staff, it was the best suggestion we could come out of, but it would have to take some work, and there's always scares of, oh, no, I can't get exactly the way I want to go. But sometimes what we suggest, and we work with some communities, you do a demonstration project, even for for two or three weeks, put off some cones, put it out there, work with your police department, fire department, and change it around, see how people like it. That's, we've already seen more and more communities do demonstration project before even jumping into full-blown studies. You can just do it with some, some bollards, some cones, you can put some flower planters, you can get the community put in and say, hey, this is going to be one-way here and signage a little bit. Take some more coordination, but it's, sometimes people just jump right into it. I would suggest with a demonstration project.
Yeah, that's, that sounds great. I did, I just, I was just throwing an overall general question, but I would, I would hope that we would take the steps to, to welcome a great change like that to that neighborhood. So, all right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, anywhere else?
Mike?
Mr. Bradley?
In regards to the Ford story building on In-N-Out Way and Stop and Shop, have you looked into the fact that that's in the hundred-year floodplain?
The, the area, we did, actually. The area that we're considering for the housing, though, would not be on that side. We would recommend that where the Dollar Store, the Dollar Tree Store is, that small development, that be moved, not completely over to a hundred-year floodplain, but that's where the, we would recommend to do the mixed-use development. As a matter of fact, you could basically reincorporate that ground floor commercial element into a, you know, four-story residential piece. So you wouldn't even have to necessarily go over into the hundred-year floodplain area.
So where the Dollar Tree Store is, that's not in a hundred-year floodplain?
To our knowledge, it is not.
I believe it is. Because even the Body Shop on In-N-Out Way evacuated all their cars to In-N-Out's parking lot the last time it flooded.
You mean in front, from right in front of the Dollar Tree Store?
Yes, In-N-Out Way going up.
Right.
Yeah, that was, they evacuated all their cars from the Body Shop to In-N-Out's parking lot the last time it flooded.
Right.
That raises right up and over, and I believe that's why the car washed on the corner was one of the reasons that closed.
Right, right. And again, our, our thinking was that it would go where the Dollar Store, I mean, has that flooded where the Dollar Tree Store is now?
We had fish going across Mendon Road, so I would say yes.
Okay, how long ago was that?
I think it was twice in the last fifteen years.
Okay.
It was 2010, there was a five-hundred-year storm. So I think a design would include commercial on the first floor. That would be, you know, sacrificial.
Where, where you wouldn't, I mean, basically, because we've worked in areas, I worked on a product where the area flooded, and what you do is that's designed for parking only. So you're going just up above that.
So then they'd just move out if it flooded?
What's that?
They would just move out the time it was flooded.
Correct. Correct.
And I'm not saying them, I'm saying the residents above them.
No, well, when you have, for example, and there's products that get built like this, where they're in a hundred-year floodplain, what they've done is they've, you know, instead of building over a podium that has commercial in it, it's a podium that has parking underneath it. So that, you know, if in fact there's going to be a flood, the cars get moved, you know, recognizing there's going to be a flood.
But the residents would still be displaced.
Not as, well, I'll give.
It'll let them bring in boats.
So I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a personal story. I live in Philadelphia. I live next to the Schuylkill River. The city of Philadelphia had the greatest historic flooding ever, two summers in a row. My con, or my townhouse was on the Schuylkill River. I had sixteen feet of water in my townhouse. I was trapped on the second floor. That was, you know, we were in a hundred-year floodplain. However, there are buildings there, this building that I lived in happened to be older. The buildings that they've built recently were built higher up with the ability to have parking underneath, and obviously people just evacuate their vehicles.
Right, but as a community, is that a smart move to be building residential in a hundred-year floodplain? We've already bought houses back from them.
Right. Again, when we looked at this analysis, we didn't reference that the hundred-year floodplain included that area on that side. We thought it was more on the other side of the parking lot.
Well, it starts that way and comes all the way down to the river.
Okay, noted.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Ms. Foyle?
Can you speak a little bit to other communities that have initiated the same type of planning and with struggles around trepidation, like hundred-year floodplain? And, and how do they take that to make it delivered into something that the, the community may really want? So this is a big, long plan. I think you said it's a twenty-year plan. What type of communities have you worked with that have taken bites of this apple and moved it along? And how has that worked for them?
I'll say, you know, I can chime in, but what we find is it depends on political will, right? It starts there, right? So we can make a lot of recommendations, but if there's not the will to pursue it, it doesn't happen. This is one of the reasons why we lay out kind of strategic actions about, you know, the actors involved, who's responsible for what, timelines and so forth. It's a mixed bag when it comes to communities doing everything that we recommend. As a matter of fact, we don't necessarily always anticipate you're going to do everything, because, you know, people on this dais are going to change and, and, you know, different, you know, motivations and different issues arise over the time. But we think if there, you know, there is generally political will to get it done, and you have continuity with staff, there are a number of these things that can be done, right? The fifteen to twenty-year piece is really, I think, more speaking to, if we look at that six-acre site on Broad Street, and, you know, first and foremost, you need to put in a zoning overlay. You need to bring in a lot of diverse property owners. That's always the challenging part, right, is assembling parcels and getting people to agree, and who wants to participate in the development versus sell, you know, sell their property, move along. So there, no, this is not easy, but we both have worked in communities, in urban area communities, where they do take bites at this apple and accomplish things. Maybe not everything, but they accomplish, you know, certain things.
No, I would just say that's, that's the great question. Part of it is having groups with combined bringing planning, bringing council, bringing all those actors that can influence things together to actually say, let's continue to move this forward. And sometimes it's starting small with these, and that's why I think this one is, this plan is not unique, but it's focused on a variety of areas where you can start in different pieces and try to move some things forward. But it's creating that, it is truly that political will. Having developer, as you said, you know, every developer just, it's more to understand the clarity of what the process is, what's expected, and is there support for it? They don't mind an order's process as much as knowing it's a clear process. I would say that, and also working, as I quote, somehow demonstration project, we're seeing more and more communities just start really small. You know, stuff they call it from tactical urbanism, just demonstration project.
Highlights.
And get some events up, get some excitement, and see where that goes. You may have other people come out of the, you know, different buildings, landlords, residents, property owners, say, wow, that worked really well. Can we do more of this? And you get some other champions, because it can't just be the people in this room, it's got to start here, but it also needs to get the community to get really involved. But it's a great question.
And based on the feedback sessions that you have had with business owners, the community folks here, do you think there's motivation to do this? Or do we just like it to always be this way and never change?
The, the motivation is dependent upon who the, you know, the folks are. Some of you may have motivation to do what we're recommending, some of you may not. Same thing as in the business community, there are business owners who say, I'm fine, don't, you know, don't mess with me. And then there are others who'd like to see change, because they can see that, you know, the pie will grow for everyone. Right? So it's a question of, I think, if you want to see that kind of change, is identifying first and foremost who is on board with that and create that coalition, and then, you know, start talking to maybe those who are sitting on the fence. For those who are just not going along with it, don't waste your time. But they're going to have a lot of fence sitters. You want to be able to convince them, and you're going to convince them with folks who are, you know, fully behind this, and, you know, they have a report to point to, and and they know where the resources are to make it happen. That's what you want to do.
And don't forget, I, we have, I'm lucky, I have a coworker that likes to walk, likes to walk, likes to speak Spanish, and he loved walking down Broad Street, going into a number of the different bakeries and talking to people. You have a number of businesses that have been here for a while that thrive in that, you know, are making it work when it is now, but they expressed excitement and talking about this thing of, oh, yeah, it'd be great if we can do this, great. So there is also maybe an unknown other group of people that really would participate and be excited about things. He was like, oh, everyone was really excited and loves Cumberland, loves this Broad Street, the energy that it has there, so.
And, and last question. Out of all of this, what part of this excites you the most?
Well, I, I think if you're focused on really changing the direction of the community, you want to go big, and the ability to go big is on Broad Street, right? Right now, Broad Street is underperforming. You know, in terms of the scale and, and, you know, the types of businesses that you have. I mean, I think at the last presentation, I used the example of you have the ability to create probably a hundred-million-dollar investment on Broad Street in that six-acre, just in that six-acre site, if it were fully developed, mixed of uses, you know, the residence, all of that, right? Right now, you don't have anything close to that, and that's why I'm saying it's underperforming. So that, to me, is exciting. But the other smaller pieces are exciting too, and, and, you know, you got to hit some singles and doubles before you hit the home run, right? The home run is that six-acre, you know, site. That shouldn't be, I mean, you, you shouldn't forsake these smaller projects. Remember, you should be pursuing those, it's low-hanging fruit, while you're also looking at the six, six-acre site as the, you know, the big home run.
I can also jump in here, like, while I stayed in my address at Hartford, I spent the first sixteen years of my life, grew up in Cumberland, just near the high school, off the main road. So when I came back here, I mean, I was like, wow, it really hasn't changed that much in thirty years. But there is going to be a lot of change happening between what was In-N-Out, and I remember fondly In-N-Out, to what's going to happen there, to the church. There's changes that are going to be occurring in this neighborhood or this area already. So how do you adapt and support changes even to, with those changes? If you don't do anything else, there's going to be changes happening. So it's not going to be the same old valley falls soon.
Thanks. Having two kids who live in two different cities, one in DC where it's very walkable, very bike-friendly, and to, you know, hear the input from him as to like what it would be, how vibrant it could be here. And then the other who is in Philly, who had to cross over the, the river to get to work every day while it flooded, to hear, that is such a vibrant community around there. It, they, they so often said what Cumberland could be, and it's really great to hear that there's some opportunities before us. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Gentlemen, Counselor Schmidt?
A, a big part of this is the redevelopment of the Stop and Shop, and have we, is it too preliminary to reach out to the owners of that property? Who owns that? Is it an entity owned by Stop and Shop? Is it totally?
Stop and Shop is a long-term tenant. And the owner is a, is a, you know, conglomerate. And we have, we have attempted to reach out to them, we have made contact, but it's, it's a bureaucracy.
I'm sure it is, and those, those businesses probably have long-term leases, which can be bought if necessary.
Right, but honestly, to have this consultant come in with a vision is something that I think, you know, it's in their best interest to consider. And the tenant, again, if there is a demonstrated, you know, it's demonstrated that there's too much parking there, and it's underutilized, that they're going to recognize a profit opportunity if you can address the flooding issue, so.
But why, if there's the opportunity there, why, why wouldn't the market settle on its own?
Well, it's all one lot right now. It would have to be subdivided, and that, one of the recommendations is to have the town consider a mixed-use overlay zone, so that if that was applied to this, this acre, this lot, you obviously, you have a critical mass of parking for the Stop and Shop, but for the second plaza, which is nestled right next to the bike path, why not consider subdividing maybe four and a half acres? why not consider subdividing maybe four and a half acres and, and have a mixed use there?
If I can answer that specific question. Here's the way in the development game works is typically, you have developers who specialize in retail, you have developers who specialize in housing. And then within that broad genre, you've got affordable housing developers, you've got luxury housing developers. You have very few middle income developers. I mean, those are your big, usually your bigger production companies such as Pulte and Beazer and Hubnadian. But I bring this up is because you asked, why isn't the market solving it? Typically, what we see, and we work for developers as well, is if it's a developer, you know, product owner like that, that their model is we develop retail centers. That's what they do, right? So they're not thinking, it's not part of their model to redevelop their site. What typically happens is a, you know, if a residential developer comes along, kind of like we're putting on that hat in this, in this process, and says, you know, I can make you more money, we can both make money, and you've got clearly an underutilized, you know, property here. You know, so let's, you know, team up, obviously, we've got to, you know, get approvals and so on and so forth. That's typically what happens. The owner of that project is not going to be the housing developer. The owner of that project, if they got interested or you're able to convince them, they would then probably turn to a third party housing developer who specializes in this. And what we're seeing is a couple of things. One is because shopping centers are underperforming in a lot of places around this country, right? And yet, again, we have this under, or you know, undersupply of housing. Well, those two things are starting to marry, right? You're seeing this with major malls, you're seeing with community shopping centers and everything in between. So this is still relatively fresh, but, and who knows, maybe this, the property owner there may have already been approached. We don't know that, but it, you know, sooner than later, it's going to happen where, you know, they're going to look at that property and say, you know, it's an opportunity cost. And let's, you know, evaluate putting another land use on it.
Good, thank you, Counselor. Gentlemen, I know in the presentation, I talks about local service and business and food orientated establishment. What's there now? Do you think from your experience of doing corridors like this, that that is the way we should look? That food establishments is probably the number one priority? Any type of retail that you see successful in the corridor like this nowadays with online shopping and, and cost malls shutting down by the?
So, so the, the phrase in our industry is eat your way to revitalization. And you see a lot of the successful places that you've become, urban places that you've become familiar with. How did they get there? Food, right? The food brings the people, the foot traffic, and then the retailers can come. Because the retailers by themselves, unless you're, you know, I mean Starbucks' food, but unless you're some well-known retailer, you're not going to go there and last very long. So food businesses come in, they pioneer, they make it safe for the retailers. Now, having said that, I will tell you, sometimes the problem is, is when the food vendor, the, the food businesses do so well, they drive up the rents such that the regular retailers can't afford it. I saw this example firsthand for a client, we worked in Long Island, New York. And the, the food businesses just proliferated on their main street. And they were so successful that they started to drive out, or at least, you know, raise the rents high enough that, you know, the traditional retailers couldn't afford it. But that took years for that to happen. I mean, the first thing is you want to establish restaurants here. And here's the thing is, you got a lot of opportunity to establish ethnic restaurants, very authentic places where people are going to say, I can't find that anywhere else, I got to come to Cumberland. You don't want a chain here, you don't want another burger joint necessarily, unless it's really spectacular, right? You want to put things here that are authentic, which really draws people from outside the area, heck, even draws them from Providence to come here. When that starts to take hold, at that point, you'll see entrepreneurs who have a, what's referred to as a dry goods place, a regular retail operation, who'll say, you know what, I think, I think it's time for me to establish a store because they're bringing in enough foot traffic. So that's how that works.
Thank you. And are you aware of any type of incubators that would give small businesses like that, like an opportunity to try a restaurant and even maybe fail without being penalized?
Yeah, the Noshon site. It's what, yeah, we talk, and here, here's how it works, and you're seeing more of this in a lot of places that we work. You need a commercial kitchen locally, right? They're called dark kitchens or dark restaurants. A commercial kitchen space, which could be that space in the Noshon building, which by the way, you know, the, the current property owner is also considering putting a commercial kitchen in. But I think it's more, it could be a combination of restaurant or commercial kitchen. Having that space is exactly what you're talking about. It is a incubator. And the way that it works is you come in as an entrepreneur and you get to rent by the hour all of the appliances, you know, the, the industrial stoves and refrigeration equipment and mixers and all that stuff. You come in and try out your recipes and do all that, cook. And then because it's licensed by the health department, you can go and take that food and sell it somewhere else. Because it's been, you know, you're doing it in a licensed facility. So that I would strongly recommend, I mean, that's another reason to establish a commercial kitchen in that building. Because then you'd find a lot of people locally who would go in, establish themselves. Once they got a following, they'd probably look to have a permanent spot somewhere on Broad Street, which is how that works, right? And you, and you want to encourage that.
Thank you. Any other questions before I turn it over to our friends in planning? Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dave, why don't you have any questions to come, Mr. Butler?
I think just a comment, I know my colleague, Ms. Reese, isn't here tonight, but if she was, we've, you know, as a board, we've vetted a lot of projects in this area the past year. BVP, In-N-Out, St. Patrick's, Noshon. Lots of neighborhood people show up, talking about traffic, talking about parking. I don't think those things are insurmountable, but I do think they have to be way up on the top of the list of, when we think about these projects is how we can make the area more dense or different density without making it gridlocked all the time. And the other thing is, I, at the meeting in January, you mentioned this and I, I didn't hear it tonight, but I think it's an important point that when you guys looked, especially at that six acre parcel, there is a lot of parking in this area that nobody knows about. Most of it's owned privately, a lot of it is between the businesses on Broad Street and the train tracks. So it's kind of behind the buildings, nobody knows it's there. It's surface parking, it just never gets used. And so in that redevelopment of Broad Street, there may be the opportunity to create municipal parking lots.
Behind, behind the building.
Behind the buildings that could then be used for the businesses during the day, residential restaurants nightlife in the evenings, taking some of the, some of the parking off the side streets and, and on Broad Street itself. But, but I did, I did want to mention that because I, and there may be, I'm sure Brett McLaughlin and other folks in the neighborhood will mention this, but I know parking and traffic are constant issues. And when you think about adding three or 400 more residents to this area and more restaurants and more businesses, I think that's the pushback. As I said, I don't think it's insurmountable, but I do think it's, has to be a big part of the planning for this. Thank you.
Am I not, okay. I just, I don't want to belabor it, but we on a planning board keep bumping into parking issues. And the town has use regulations where businesses have a certain requirement, they have a certain amount of parking. And even though this would be spread over a number of years, the town, I'll use a phrase, isn't used to dense development in a small, relatively small area where there's a lot that would be happening. And what has to be given consideration is perhaps the town rules, so to speak, may have to be looked at to try and accommodate what is planned or what we would like to do. Because it isn't just residences, it's businesses as well. And I don't know when it's going to turn into a point where it may be a, not a problem, but an issue. I think at some point, if we're successful enough, parking is going to rear and set. Thank you.
You're, you're absolutely right there. I mean, that's, as I said, we started looking at that, and I think there's a combination of issues. There's the residential parking and, you know, this, this is a pretty dense area as it is. I mean, it, it's densely developed and you have many, you know, the, the existing housing. Our, our assumption is, and this may be just in discussions with, with landlords and tenants is, you know, there's a lot of apartments that are actually bedroom by bedroom, or there's probably, you know, a car per bedroom being used. So you have, almost have more than traditionally you may say from a, a house, which is maybe a two family house. You may actually have six or seven cars versus the traditional two or three cars. So you have that type of overnight residential parking demand. Right now, on the other side of the equation, the business retail parking demand isn't that high. So how do you balance that out? And that's one of the things we started to think about was from the shared parking perspective. Public-private partnerships, if you've ever been to, I always use, because I'm up there, my daughter lives in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. You can drive around Portsmouth and you may park, there's parking meters throughout the town, both on streets and park in lots and bank parking lots and everywhere else. And there's certain times of the day where they're activated and they're, they're private in certain times of the day. But you use the same sort of online app if you want, or parking meters. But private parking, it's signed, it's probably four or five dollars an hour more than the public parking. But there's a relationship and it all looks like you have, there's plenty of parking. So some of it, you have to be creative. The town I live in, West Hartford, that's exactly what they did. They started to talk to the business and say, this is parking, when can we use this time of day uses and work through it? So, but what it takes, and that's what we're recommending, is proactively start that process. Because you're right, you're going to hear it all the time, there's not enough parking, not a parking for my business. I don't want to have to park down the street, what am I going to do with parking? I mean, you could, there's a lot of steps in that process. The beginning of that discussion is going to be crucial, crucial, or else you will have people screaming and yelling at every meeting saying there's not enough parking.
There you go. I have a couple of questions about what will end up being in the final report. You had touched on mimicking essentially a state revolving fund as far as like a loan opportunity for local businesses to kind of have some money to borrow to fix up the storefront. Do you have resources that will be available on how to start programs like that?
We're actually not recommending you start any programs. Actually, there's plenty of programs at the state through, you know, Commerce and some of its affiliates. There, you know, a lot of times, as well, I should also mention, the SBA has its Small Business Development Centers and its Small Business Administration lending programs. And we've identified those in the report. We are not recommending that you reinvent the wheels. As a matter of fact, totally against that because there are programs and resources that go unsubscribed, right? It's a question of directing people to them. You know, we, part of this process, we interviewed the gentleman who oversees the Small Business Development Center that covers Providence in a local region. And we asked him a series of questions, how often do you get down here? And he doesn't, you know, and it's not, you know, I'm not casting aspersions on him, just, he goes where he's contacted, right? It's kind of like, it's a demand-driven type of function. If he's not getting contacted in a given location, he's probably assuming, well, there's not a lot of, you know, entrepreneurial activity such that I need to be there, and he's spread thin, so that makes sense. But, you know, the recommendation is that, and again, through the, the individual that we identified for Central Falls, who kind of wears many hats, you know, helping entrepreneurs, helping, you know, local folks get the job skills they need. It's a person like that who can act as kind of an ombudsman to say, oh, you want to start a business? All right, you know, let's get you in front of the SBA, let's get you through the Small Business Development Center, which provides the technical skills, not the money, it's the SBA that does that. And oh, by the way, Commerce Rhode Island also has a bunch of programs for small businesses, many of which do not, you know, get taken advantage of. Now, I will also say sometimes, you know, folks get discouraged because they were declined. But it has more to do with being a startup and, you know, all that that goes into that. They're either, you know, they don't have the technical savvy yet, or they're underfunded because they got to bring their own funds. So there are reasons for that, but we are not recommending that you start any new programs.
Okay. Also, you had mentioned place making. Now, when you say, do you mean it purely in an economical way, like bringing businesses to an area? Or are you looking at it as creating like a park or a type of event that could be stimulated by this growth that could make this a destination?
In our recommendation, the place making is sort of make people feel or aware that they are in a place. We've had bucks in signage, we talked, Todd had mentioned earlier, the branding and maybe, you know, the name of where we are and, and wayfinding signage of where there is parking, where you connect to the trail, where you can connect to some of the park areas. So we're talking about, almost it's a highlighting, it's an information that someone, you know, you have your phone and lots of people can get directions there, but sometimes it's visually nice to know you're in a place. And this is a different part of Cumberland than, than the rest of Cumberland, but it has unique characteristics and a lot of great amenities and opportunities that are there. So it's almost highlighting that, especially has, we will have over time, some, some new residents in here. When you talk about the redevelopments that we talked about here. So it's creating a place that they feel like they're, they are somewhere. So it's, it's not, it may lead to events, exactly what you said, but we were just more on the, as ideally Broad Street gets completed, it becomes much more with the trees and maybe some other signage, wayfinding, just, you feel like you are somewhere, the people that are here already.
Um, I just have one last question. How do you deal with growth in a place like this without it leading to worries of gentrification?
I get that, I get that one. Yeah. That is always challenging. You know, anytime that a, a community or town becomes successful from an investment standpoint, you know, it's the next hot, cool place. You know, all of a sudden, a lot of new people move in and, you know, drive up rents and new, you know, coffee houses and all that come in and they drive out. That's a market function, right? However, recognizing that it does happen, there are proactive measures that can be taken. So for example, on the housing side, you want to make sure, and you, you currently do, you've got a, you know, an affordable housing policy in place, and I think it's 20, it's 20%, is it not? Right, so in part, that helps to ameliorate, you know, the gentrification piece, not all of it, some of it. You could also come up with a, you know, and for this, you're going to, you would need money or resources of some sort. But some communities will preserve certain storefronts for local entrepreneurs that they want to make sure aren't priced out because the rents go up, might mean buying the building so that, that, you know, you know, beloved entrepreneur, that business gets to stay there. It's not easy, right? Because what we're, all the things we're suggesting here necessarily means, if, if they were to happen, necessarily means that market values will increase. And with market values increasing, so too will rents. And some people aren't going to be able to, you know, afford it. It's a question of at what scale that gets to. And you're, you know, at this point, we're talking about something that would occur many years out. It's not something that happens in the near term, but it is something that will happen in the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me? Should be on, isn't it? Does better?
Hello?
Good? Okay. Well, it took the, the discussion that Mr. Butler had, and so one thing that a planning board pretty much wrestles with all the time is obviously the traffic and the parking and so on. And also Counselor Shaw had questioned about one-way streets to add parking and so on. I don't have anything more to add about that except an observation. This past fall, I ended up in North Conway. And if anybody's been up there, it's changed dramatically since the last time I was there. But it just happened, this will happen to be a very busy weekend. Lot of activities going on and the place was packed with cars, traffic and people on both sides of the street. And the thing that struck me the most is there was a lot of onsite, on-street parking, okay? And the street was wide enough to handle. And the street was wide enough to handle parking on both sides, but they also had municipal parking areas behind the businesses, behind the banks, behind the restaurants. And that just so happened to be where we ended up parking. So I think in order for something to work down here, we have to kind of really look into having some off-site parking that's behind some of these businesses. And if it's located in such an area where it's easy for them to get out of their car in the back parking lot and walk just around the corner to wherever establishment they want to go to. Um, I think that can really work down here if we have um, a space to do it and availability to do it. And yes, Mr. Bradley, that is a 100-year floodplain. I know that for a fact. And if anybody notices down in the stop and shop area, that big berm that goes around that was put in fifty years ago, maybe, that was done for that purpose. And also, uh, being, uh, of that time when the Lonsdale Driving was open and I spent a number of years down there, uh, going to, um, shows and stuff, they completely converted that whole, uh, area, and it was huge and it flooded all the time in the driving. And that's now a marshy area. And yet we're still having issues with flooding down there. Um, that's something that they're going to have to look at. And if you want to look at Florida where they're 1,000 year storm, let's hope that never happens here. But nevertheless, that is definitely, and I know that for a fact. I used to work for the DOT years years ago. I said, it is a 100-year floodplain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If no other questions before I take any from the, uh, audience on Zoom, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Mudd.
Well, I, first of all, I appreciate the, uh, council meeting tonight with with the planning board and all the, uh, hard work that that the planning board has, uh, has undertaken recently. And we appreciate the council's approval of Todd and and Ken. And and I think I said it to Glenn, I think, you know, when we went through that process, we were looking for, uh, you know, a different perspective on on Broad Street. And and I do think that you guys have have delivered that. And, uh, there's a lot, uh, that, uh, for us to think about. And there I, it's it's near and dear, uh, to my heart, uh, Broad Street, having been, you know, in this area all my life. And so there are some projects happening, but but we have seen from when, uh, you know, in and hopes heyday. And then, uh, you know, then when it wasn't in and hopes heyday, that that you've seen that, in my opinion, uh, that you've seen, you know, the area, uh, lose a little bit of, uh, its luster, if you will, right? Uh, and I do think it's an area that could have a different vibe. I think, you know, we always talk about North Cumberland and South Cumberland. This is not going to be North Cumberland. I, you know, I I think that's a good thing. And and I don't, and I don't mean that in any disrespect to North Cumberland, but uh, you can have a different vibe here. There can be a lot more, uh, you know, uh, excitement, if you will, and in different activities down here. Part of our, to piggyback off this, um, you know, this grant that we got from Commerce. And so we are working, we we realize that parking, uh, you know, is an issue. Uh, I don't know if it was somebody, I think it was Mr. Butler. I I don't think it's insurmountable either. I think it needs to be a little bit creative, but 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 people also want to be a place, you know, if you're driving down and no one's going there and there's plenty of parking, you tend not to stop there, right? It's the balance. You want to go where people are. You don't want it to be so, you know, such a discouragement, if you will, but you do want to be where other people want to be as well. So it wears that balance. I do think there's locations here that that, you know, with some, uh, creative thinking could, uh, could accommodate that. And I would like to see, uh, you know, like the branding was the Mill Village Mile. I guess we haven't shown that yet, but the council's seen that because we did submit a couple of grant requests. But the idea to identify, uh, you know, the area and have it as somewhat of a destination. Obviously, there is that balance, right? And we all, we all recognize that. Uh, and and the gentrification was definitely, uh, something that's on our mind and, uh, you know, would want to, would want to avoid that. So I would just say, you know, I I am appreciative. Uh, I think, uh, you know, when we did internally go through the selection process, uh, I would say, Todd and Ken, I, it, uh, you know, when when we did select your firm, uh, I feel like we we got what we we were looking for. So we're very appreciative of that. And, uh, you know, it's just a start. I know, uh, we do have a parking study as part of if Commerce looks favorably upon our 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 next grant request. And we also have one for the place making and the signage and you know, some some lanterns and just to, uh, you know, to identify the space. So we think it's a, uh, an exciting time and hopefully, uh, you know, we we do, we do take, uh, we we hit a couple of singles, maybe steal a few bases and maybe we'll score something. Thank you.
Mayor, before you run, does anybody on the either panel have a question for the mayor? Before he goes, everybody's good? Okay. Um, next, I will, you know, I just want to make a comment to what you said. You know, I always, and I actually, I think I brought this up to the mayor, you know, why can't we look big? And why can't Broad Street be the the federal hill of the Blackstone Valley? Especially how Central Falls has been a walking area. And they see, you see those ethnic restaurants developing there. We could just be a continual continuation of that. And and, uh, in the in the years, I hope there could be a nice partnership between the three cities as the state's doing now with the redevelopment project of the whole street. So I I think, uh, to echo the mayor's point, I think you were on the right trajectory on trying to achieve that.
That's to your advantage that you have those businesses that are established and bringing people because you can kind of leverage off of that. You're not starting from scratch because you have that activity. So you're absolutely right. I mean, that's how it works. You just kind of bring that further in. You know, thank you.
So I've got to go to the members of the public. I I see we have two here. Okay, I'll start with, uh, Jim McLaughlin, former rep. Welcome to the, back to the chamber, Rep.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council and members of the planning board, thank you so much, you know, I I do. And, uh, you know, there's no question about it, uh, you know, you have to move forward, but how you move forward is, uh, catch 22 situation, especially with five eighths of a mile on Broad Street. That's where you, you, you of selected businesses and parking. Uh, what I would like to note is basically the lack of consideration for the people who've lived here all their lives. Okay. The people on the side streets. Uh, you're going to hear pros and cons, you know. Uh, these are the people that pay the taxes. Okay. Now, what I would like to see, Cumberland is, uh, or always been known as a bedroom community. Uh, you know, people come from Pawtucket, Central Falls, uh, North Providence, all right? Uh, it's a bedroom community. I don't know what the ratio is now. What is it? Seventy percent, uh, sixty percent? Um, industrial, uh, uh, residential? Does anybody know? Jonathan? It used to be like seventy, thirty. Oh, all right. Seventy percent. And that's, that's a tone that people look at. I was born and brought up on River Street. Or Forest Avenue. Another thing that needs to be looked at is, um, Cumberland's historical content. Okay. Uh, that got lost in the shuffle. Right? This used to be the valley. Historical context, you know. Uh, you had Courier Park, you had all these different, uh, yeah, you know, venues that was actually accredited by the federal government. No longer. We don't want to lose our identity. This is all I run a question. And I agree with Mr. Butler and um, some members of the planning group. Um, if you're going to move on these projects, move cautiously. Uh, I am concerned with the inner structure. The inner structure of, uh, the density on Broad Street and the inner structure of, uh, the town of Cumberland. I look, we have so many beautiful things, Abbott Run Valley. Okay, Heinz Road up north, someone mentioned up north. We have so many, uh, you know, viable places that, uh, haven't even been explored. Uh, you talk about fine restaurants, you you know, everybody likes good food. You know? Uh, I I don't see any country kitchens up north. You know? Places that could be utilized, everything's uh, you know, density in one certain location. But I want to reiterate, okay, uh, to you people and take taking into consideration the people that have lived here all their lives and paid taxes. When you move, move cautiously, you know? Uh, they mentioned the one ways, okay? But the average person has come home for the last 30 years. All right? And he goes to go up the street and it's now a one-way. You know, this is not Philadelphia, okay? This is not Providence. This is not Central Falls because I've dealt with Central Falls. You know, I used to be the rep for Central Falls. You know? Uh, but that's another story in itself. Everybody likes good food. But, uh, at what cost are we willing to sacrifice, you know? Uh, and give up some of these things? With that said, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Rep.
Thank you.
Mr. Consilis. Just state your name and address for the the record.
How are you, sir?
Uh, Consilis, um, Angeles Palace Pizza, I'm in the owner of Cumberland. I got to interview with these guys on the phone and it was a great discussion. Um, I'm excited about the town and hiring agency and the planning committee looking at how to better improve Valley Falls, basically what we're talking about. Um, and that's why I was excited to get my input and get some ideas for my own selfish reasons, because I have a restaurant in town and, um, we kind of developed and spent a lot of money in the valley before. I think anyone was really spending any money in the valley and it worked out great. So I think there's great opportunity in the valley. And I do believe that if you bring more action to the area, um, you know, I always hate that. I always get nervous when I say more restaurants, but I do understand that when you create a destination, it does bring more action. But I I do have a couple of cautionary tales when I talk about this. Um, and it was more examples in the past of things that drove business to my business, which is what I'll speak about, that we don't have anymore or things that are working right now. Example, when we, when Anna Hope rented out the space for the Polar Express before they built their train sick, Station One Socket, we used to get inundated with customers from Massachusetts, all different parts of Rhode Island. And I was like, it's way better having their train station up in one socket. And I was like, how do we capture something like that? We even get busy from Blackstone River Theater on Saturday nights, just from people coming from Providence and other parts of the state to go watch, to listen to Irish folk music. Right? It's not necessarily attracting a huge audience, but it makes a difference. And so one of the things that I mentioned on my call with these, I forgot who I talked to, but oh, yeah, all right, um, was what can we do to create some of those destination events that won't put a burden on our schools, right? Um, but then bring more money to the business. So when I look at this just from a brass, you you asked about, doesn't the market dictate this stuff? Five, 600 apartments, you add Anna Hope. That sounds awesome for me. But if you put two restaurants in there and a coffee shop, not good for the coffee shop that you got to walk up the stairs to to get to on Dexter Street and Broad. Not great for me that has a restaurant around the corner because it's not big enough yet. And I get, and I'm not afraid of competition, but smaller guys that think they're going to benefit from 250 units, it's not really that many consumers. Right? But it's got to start somewhere. So I get it. So I sometimes, early on in this projects and these developments, I don't know how much sense the mixed use makes sense in the beginning. I'll tell you why. Broad Street, 118 Broad Street, my brother-in-law owns that with his dud. Six units, four residential, two commercial on the bottom. Guess what he got here three years ago? A variance from you guys to allow it to be residential, couldn't rent it in five years, rented it in one week, once he listed it residential. So there's a need for residential, but there's a balancing act. It, I just don't know if early on, it's more housing, maybe one-bedroom unit. So there's less of a burden on the school system as well. So I look at that as an eventual taxpayer and how that works, though I love having kids, so I can have future workforce and more customers. So don't get me wrong. Um, and then my other thoughts were like, I don't see anything driving people here besides creating more housing and businesses. And I know it's a tricky thing, right? But like, if there was something that drove people from outside the area to the area, so they come spend their money and leave, that's a win-win. I would love that, support it. Anyway, Ken come up with a committee, happy to serve on. My next question on the Anna Hope project, I think you guys were talking about building over where the Dollar Store was and building above that for residential. Is that what you're getting at?
Being commercial on the ground.
Which is, which is, which makes sense. And I get like how you do the overlay on it. But that is the overt, which I'm more than happy to have on that. But is there an opportunity on the other side to do residential with the garage park on the bottom? Because that's definitely on the flood side, but is that opportunity on that side? Because that's the underutilized part of that parking lot. The other side's the heavier news side, even though this pocket in the back, so it could be offset with the residential. So I just was wondering out loud about that. And if you have any ideas on some sort of I don't know, theaters, I mean, anything that brings people to the area that kind of come and go. You know, um, because the Broad Street plan, I think it's great. It's 20 years out. What's going to help us the next two, three, four, five years is kind of what, for me, my own personal, um, reflection and comments on that. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Consilis, for joining us. Is anybody joining us on Zoom?
Uh, we have one virtual person and I think he works for our local newspaper. So.
Of course, Mayor.
Yeah, so so a couple of things. First of all, no one's forgetting about the people that live here. Jim, not at all. That this area was always a workforce housing area. That was the bread and butter of Broad Street, right? When it was in and hope. What we're saying is you take that same model, hopefully, without any of this, uh, any gentrification, and you just make it into 2023 through 2030, the same thing, if you could. If you want to have a business, you need to have customers. Right? It's, you don't cut your way into prosperity in the business world, right? You need customers. When you have new customers, those new customers haven't identified their buying habits in the area. So that's a possibility. That that gives you an opportunity. A lot of other, uh, residents have already established those. You're going to try to change them, but but clearly, we would not forget the historical value of the valley. It is part of why, you know, uh, the project on with St. Patrick's that 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 we clearly wanted to save the building. Uh, and and we think that's a, uh, you know, things change. Things change. It's no, no matter what, it it's going to change. And as far as a destination, clearly, uh, Billy, that that was always our thought. And and if you could have, you know, if this was a perfect world, then in and hope would be that destination, right? And so people would come and they'd leave, but you know, the market doesn't suggest for developers, those type of activities, we have not given up hope that we couldn't get some of that inside that facility, but it's just not, it's just not the way it is. I will also say as far as the park, there is another initiative that, you know, we have been working hard on for, uh, I don't know, a long time for it to, uh, for, uh, behind Stop and Shop that we think is, uh, that we hope uh, would present somewhat of a destination for the area. Uh, you know, it is a super fun site. We we are looking to develop a, uh, you know, a hardscape park, uh, uh, as an interest to replace the park that that was taken away, uh, over here. We think it does a lot of things and connectivity to Martin Street. So, uh, so I just, I just couldn't let that one go as far as we're not forgetting anybody uh, on on Broad Street. Um, we're not trying to dismiss any historical uh, value, but we're trying to balance that with uh, what it, what it was, what it is and what it could be. And and, you know, in a perfect world, we we do. Uh, what it, what it was, what it is and what it could be. And, and you know, in a perfect world, we, we do it right. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor, thank you very much.
I'll add one piece to that.
I'm sorry, Council.
I'll add one piece to that.
Of course.
And thinking what former Rep McLaughlin was saying, I think he doesn't want us losing our identity as a town. As everything we compare to is a city, which we are not.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing uh, no other questions of councils, any last remarks, planning board members? Mr. Chairman, would you like to uh, adjourn your meeting?
Motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Butler.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for an adjournment for the Cumberland Town Council at eight, ten PM. Do I have a motion? Motion by Council Shaw, do I have a second? Second by Council Nativia, all in favor to adjourn at eight, ten, uh, say aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at eight, ten by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you everyone.